The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Billsbuck and Councilman Fraylin. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $332,109.46. F, approval of baswa report of claims in the amount of $7,426.77. G, approval of write-off of ambulance bad debts. H, approval of change order number one, an increase in the amount of $2,235 for the new fire station project to Zephyr Towers. I, acceptance of farmers cooperative fuel purchase agreement for 8,000 gallons of Roadmaster fuel in the amount of $2.62 per gallon for the city of Beatrice sanitation department to be used between July 1st, 2021 and October 31st, 2021. J, award of bid in the amount of $155,597.26 and approval of change order number one, a decrease in the amount of $44,827.17 for the West Court Street Big Blue River Access Project 2021 to Lottman Excavating. K, resolution number 6738 entering into an agreement for purchase and sale of renewable energy certificates between the city and ACT Commodities Incorporated as recommended by the Board of Public Works. L, resolution number 6739 appointing Kenzie Manjers to the Beatrice, to the police officers' retirement committee. M, resolution 6740 reappointing Christine Hulse to the city of Beatrice Library Board. N, resolution 6741 executing an animal control services agreement to R, Steve Bragg. And O, resolution 6742 executing the grant award in special conditions and any other documents necessary for the fiscal year 2021 Nebraska Law Enforcement Racial Profiling Equipment Grant Fund. Is there any item that any member of the council wants removed from the consent agenda?
K.
Item K?
An abstain from I.
Okay. Duly noted. Anybody else? Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of K be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
By Claybaugh, second by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of item K be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented. Vote please. And that is approved 6-0. I think...
Turn Billsbuck off.
Yeah, Billsbuck needs to be turned off. Okay? Thank you. All right, Mr. Claybaugh, item K?
I move that item K, resolution number 6738, entering into the agreement for purchase and sale of renewable energy certificates between the city and ACT Commodities as recommended by the Board of Public Works be approved, accepted, or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that we further discuss resolution number 6738.
I was just curious, Tobias, how we, how you price those and how you kind of earn them through the wind farm a little bit?
Sure. So, as everybody knows, we own part of the Cottonwood Wind Farm, and so we receive renewable energy certificates or renewable energy credits as it generates electricity. For every megawatt hour it generates, it also generates a certificate. And then you can sell those certificates to other companies who want to purchase those to offset their energy uses. So, as green energy is pushed out onto the market, nobody knows for sure which electrons you're getting. This way, companies who want to say they're using green electricity can purchase these certificates, claim them, and show that that's how they are offsetting and making sure they're using wind or solar or some type of renewable energy source. So, that's how you earn them. Basically, they go into a savings account, for lack of a better term, and they store up until you're ready to sell them. There's an out, there's a market out there for these certificates, and we were approached by a couple of different companies wanting to buy the ones we had, and so then you kind of look to see what the spot price is at that time. Based upon the vintage of when they were generated, it kind of determines the price of them. And so, it just varies, but there is a, there is a market out there, and you kind of look to see what the market price is at that time.
So, you're planning on selling these?
We'll probably look to do these, you know, maybe once every six months or so, probably let them build up for a while, and then, once they're kind of worth their time, we'll, we'll sell some more of them and go that route.
This is the first time we've done it with Cottonwood, though, correct?
Correct. It's the first time we've sold any recs.
Any other questions?
Money that we get off of those certificate sales, does that go back into the general fund or?
No, it's electric.
Okay, it goes to electric?
Electric department.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved 6-0. Resolution 6738 has been passed and adopted. We have no public bids this evening. I haven't finished with that yet. Thanks. Next is resolution, resolution 6743, entering into an emergency dispatch services in our local agreement with the county of Richardson, Nebraska, to operate an enhanced 911 system and a radio dispatching system on behalf of the county.
I move that resolution number 6743 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number 6743 has been passed and adopted. With us is Beatrice Police Chief Bruce Lang, who has been working with Richardson County officials, and if you want to give everybody an update on where we're at.
Okay, well, maybe it'd be beneficial if we, kind of just, since we don't have a lot of other things on here, we'll talk just briefly about how we got to where we are. In 1992, Gage County had three dispatch centers. The city of Wyomar had one that they dispatched and answered 911 calls in their house. Some, an older couple had it, the phones actually routed to their house. The Gage County Sheriff's Office had a dispatch center, and the city of Beatrice Police Department had a dispatch center. That was all just in Gage County. In 1994, when we moved to the new facility, and I had obviously had my eye that this is someplace we needed to go, we got together and decided to consolidate those services into one center. And so, the communication center was born in its current location, and it, at that point, dispatched for the city of Wyomar, the Gage County Sheriff's Office, Beatrice Police Department, and all the rural fire and rescue departments in Gage County.
And the ambulance.
I'm sorry?
And the ambulance.
Yes, and, and all of the fire and rescue departments, ambulances, rescue departments in Gage County. In early, oh, 2000, we started thinking that as the technology, A, got very expensive, and B, staffing became an issue, that where we wanted to have adequate staff to be able to handle critical incidents. In about 2013, a committee was formed to cover southeast Nebraska because we had a problem with our 911 phone system. And at that point, this committee was formed, Brent Lottman over at Neimah County and myself chaired this committee, and it looked at replacing the phone system, the 911 phone system, because of this problem. At that point, I addressed the crowd, so to speak, and that included Lincoln, Lancaster, and everybody, basically, south of I-80. And I said, hey, if anybody interested in talking about consolidation of 911 services, because this stuff's getting expensive. And basically, it was one of them things where everybody looked at the floor, nobody said a word, so I said, okay, that's enough of that, and we moved on. We were able to fix the phone system, so now, no matter where you're at in southeast Nebraska, and that's our region, and it goes now all the way from Hastings to the Missouri River and then southeast interstate. If you dial 911, the phone call goes to a box in Lincoln, and there's two of them, redundant boxes, and then that box knows, based on where that phone call came from, what dispatch, we call them PSAP, so I'll start using that term going forward, what PSAP to send that phone call to. And the computer does this all for you, and it works out great. Only problem you have any issues is if you had, what happened to hit a tower with your cellphone that was in an adjoining county, it might send it to the wrong PSAP, in which case they got to forward it to the correct one. With technology that's coming forward, that won't be, that won't be the issue that it is today. Then in about 2015, actually, it was the same time we got hit by lightning and we had a flood, the city of Crete approached us and said, we're at a crossroads with technology, and we're gonna have to spend a lot of money, would you consider join, us joining the center? At which time, we said, sure. And the city of Crete then became a member of the southeast Nebraska Communication Center. And it's been a great partnership. We've been in, we've had a contract with them since 2015, and as some of you know, we've always kind of held the olic branch out that others could join, because a lot of these centers don't have a lot of residents in a lot of these counties. And so, having a standalone dispatch center for a county that has 5,000 people in it, in the whole county, really doesn't make any economic sense. And then, when you start talking about having to buy half a million dollar worth of equipment or a million dollars' worth of equipment, then it really doesn't seem to make any sense. So, a couple of months ago, we got approached by Richardson County because they were at that crossroads where they were gonna need to buy some stuff. We met with them, we saw what, what they needed, they're on the, get into all the techie details, but they're on a statewide radio system, they use the same mapping we use, they use the same phone system, obviously, like I said. And so, the contract you have before you is for them, for us, to provide dispatch services for them. And so, we're, we're in that process of getting all the ducks in a row, so to speak, to do that. We have been in discussions with the city of Fall City, we've been in discussions with County, Johnson County, who dispatches for Pawnee County, so that automatically puts us in discussions with them. And, you know, we, we would entertain discussions with any of the surrounding area counties or cities to provide a dispatch service. And so, the question comes up every time, you know, why are you doing this? And the benefit is for them, is that they get better service by being able to share resources that they wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. How's it benefit the city of Beatrice and citizens is, it allows us to have resources that we couldn't afford and to have personnel there for when the proverbial action hits the fan and you need a lot of bodies to, to get the job done, we can do that, those will be there. And it really benefits, and, and we've, we've think shown over the last several years that it really benefits everybody. Is, is there, one of the questions I got, was there a, a point where it would become too big? Possibly, but we're a long ways from there. And if you move outside of Beatrice and of southeast Nebraska, consolidation of communication centers is going on all across the state as we speak, and cities and counties that are a lot larger than ours are consolidating, and in the metro areas, the suburbs have consolidated many years ago, almost all of them are much larger than we are, but they know that by sharing those resources, they get better service. If you get outside of Nebraska, it's literally common that any suburb, large metropolitan area, other than the main cities, usually have consolidated dispatch centers. This is not, it's not a wheel that we invented by any stretch. So, what you have before you today is simply bringing Richardson County on to the southeast Nebraska 911 center. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer questions.
So, how many people are on the sheriff's office in Richardson County?
I think it's nine.
Wow, I would guess a little lower.
You too.
So, do you have any problem? I mean, I know technology's a lot better than it was 100 years ago when I was involved in this, but Richardson County goes a long ways down, so there's some really, really low spots there.
Yeah, there, there is, and one of the benefits of the technology that's way different than, you probably remember it, is that we use the computer system to locate where we're at. In the old days, when we talked about consolidation, the first thing they said was, well, now, when I call 911, you know, Sally's not gonna answer the phone, and she's not gonna know where Uncle Abe's farm is four miles south of town. Well, A, Sally doesn't work here anymore because she quit, and the new Sally has only been with us for a year, and she's never been from Gage County, or she's never been in Richardson County, she doesn't know that. So, what she goes by is the mapping system that I alluded to earlier, we're all required to have them, and they're imported into your, our computer system, we pay a lot of money for it. And so, when a phone call comes up, it comes up on that map, and it tells that dispatcher exactly where we're going, and it tells them what fire truck to send, what ambulance to send, what law enforcement agency to send. And it takes the guesswork out of it, and it's much more accurate than what it was 20 years ago.
So, Bruce, does, does this fix the, I know it was several years ago, but there was a couple that froze to death because...
Yep.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about?
I know 100% what you're talking about.
Does this fix that?
Yes. It has, and we, we actually fixed that shortly after that happened. That motivated people to fix that, and that's, but that part's been fixed for quite a long time. But I am familiar with what you're talking about. That, we used to call that phase two of enhanced 911, and that allowed us to locate people pretty closely. With next-gen 911, you know how you, you, when you walk into Kohl's, and all of a sudden your phone pops up with an ad for Kohl's, and you go, how'd that happen? Well, it's because there's a chip in your phone that is able to bounce off a satellite and tell them you're here. All right? Well, that same technology is in this, what they call next-gen 911, which is what's coming, which our communication center has all the equipment it needs for next-gen 911. Most of these folks don't. Anyway, it's gonna use that technology, so it'll literally be able to locate somebody within a few feet of where they're at.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't they going to erect a new tower also?
Yes, um, yeah, whether we, whether we, or we, whether they, sorry, they joined this or not, they were gonna have to erect a, a tower to connect them with the system, we're really getting detailed here, but called Enren, and that links the entire state of Nebraska with the microwave towers, and that's how we send these signals all over the place, and it's a redundant system. That's how we connect with Crete, that's how we'll connect, in part, with Richardson County. Fall City chooses to, to come onboard, we'll actually use them as well, but they're building, you know, and that's, they're dying, they're, they're building the tower.
So, the days of skip is over.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty much a goner. Yeah, you really are deeding yourself.
Yeah, I am.
No Mex, no, no Mexico.
Yeah, but, so, there you go.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, Bruce did, Richardson County, I understood they came on as a consumer of our service like Crete is, is that right?
Yes, everyone that, that's a good point, Gary. Currently, the setup of the center is that we have advisory boards, both law enforcement and fire and rescue, but all of the participants at this point are what we would call consumers, which means they pay us for a fee for the service, and we're required or obligated to provide the service. There, we are studying the makeup of the center to make sure that that's the most efficient way, and to make sure that the funding models that we're, that we're gonna try to use are the most fair to everybody. So, yeah, we are kind of on a dual train track, but we are exactly exploring that.
Staffing, you're gonna have to add a couple more dispatchers in?
Yes, we're, our intention is with, with this, we'll add two more dispatchers, that will put us at 12 full-time, which allows us to have three 24/7.
And that's a real benefit to our community.
It's a benefit to everybody, it's a, it's a 100% correct, and one of the things that, as I spoke to different groups about this, you know, almost always, we can say, we're gonna save, you're gonna save money, significant money. It costs about $300,000 to staff a one-person communication center 24/7. So, we're gonna save you money on almost any, in almost every scenario. And you're gonna get better service because we're sharing resources, you're able to have a computer system you wouldn't be able to afford, we couldn't afford, nobody, if you were by yourself. So, if you got those two things, you'd say, well, why doesn't everybody jump onboard? And the bottom line is, they don't want to. And until they want to, then you don't have those discussions, and it doesn't do any good to do anything about it until something changes and, and people want to join. And so, we're not, we're not here enforcing anybody, and we're simply saying, here, it's available, and if you choose to join with us, and, and we can work together, save us all some money, we're here.
Any other questions, gentlemen? From the audience? All right, your vote, please, just stay there, chief.
Gotcha.
And that is approved 6-0. Next is Item B, resolution number 6744, executing the agreement between the city and Beatrice Community Hospital and Health Center Incorporated, for the city to provide personnel for the protection and security of hospital staff, patrons, and property located at 4,800 Hospital Parkway, Beatrice, Nebraska, 68310.
I move that resolution number 6744 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that resolution number 6744 be passed and adopted. I'll yield to you again, chief.
Thank you, sir. The Beatrice Community Hospital has employed for quite a long time, security at their hospital, security staff, through private companies. Some of our officers worked moonlighted there for those companies, but it was, it was a private security deal. And a few months ago, I was approached by Rick Carlson from the Beatrice Community Hospital to see if we would be willing to provide that service with a police officer, basically staff, an officer there. And initially, I wasn't real sure I want, that was a, a great decision, but the more I thought about it, I thought it had some real advantages for the city of Beatrice as well as the hospital. And being a large employer that also has a lot of our citizens in and out of there all the time, we started to explore the options, and, and we came to the agreement that you have in front of you tonight. What we're proposing is that, those of you that have been into the emergency room, as you walk in the doors, to the right, there was a secretary, kind of what the glassed-off area, that will become the Beatrice Police Department substation. And we will staff that with two officer, well, one officer at a time, but we're adding two officers to staff that, and we'll do it with, I don't really want to publicize the exact hours, but let's just say that we will be out there during the important times, what they've identified as when they want officers there.
Peak hours.
Peak hours, thank you, did, peak hours. And also, that officer will be available to take reports from somebody who's out there that, maybe they're a victim of domestic violence, and they get out there and they want to report it to an officer. This officer would do that, this officer could take a theft report, he could, of course, be there to quell a disturbance, which unfortunately happens at the hospital on occasion, in emergency rooms especially. He could provide a lot of functions out there. And the hospital is paying 100% of the bill, there'll be no cost to the taxpayers on this. So, they're paying 100% of the bill. So, we're looking at starting this about 1st of September. This is a five-year contract with 3% increases, and the reason we went so long-term is because we have to hire people, and we wanted a commitment from them, because we were giving them a pretty big commitment. And so, we, the hard part, the hard part to work through on all this was, what do we do till I can get the people hired and trained? And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna utilize some sworn officers that'll work for us part-time, be officers or deputies from surrounding areas that are, will pay a salary, or pay an hourly salary to, to help us out in the interim while we're, while we're there. So, like I said, I was a little apprehensive in the beginning, but I can tell you that I think it's, I'm not apprehensive anymore, I think it's gonna be a good thing for the community, a good thing for the hospital, a good thing for the Beatrice Police Department, because there's a lot of things that occur there that spill over back onto the street, mental health commitments, intoxicated people gotta go to detox, all those things that we can use that guy or officer for.
That officer can then, you, can go to Lincoln for those purposes and not take it away from...
Correct. If we have to haul one of those people to Lincoln for whatever, then that person's gonna be a lot of trouble.
So, Bruce, have you identified any specific training that they're gonna have to have? Obviously, when we entered into this agreement with the school, school resource officers require the specific training. So, in this thing, and you and I had this conversation at the last budget time, the amount of time that you spend with mental health patients, so will the officers that do this, will they have specific training in identifying, working with people that have mental problems, because that's a large percentage of this, also the domestic violence, that that's would be a large percentage of this, and also probably sexual assault, something like that, because that would be, I mean, are you earmarking training specifically for that task?
Short answer is no, and here's why. The person that's assigned there will vary. I'll give you an example, there'll be four officers and a supervisor, let's say, five officers and a supervisor, and the supervisor's simply gonna say, Bob, you're assigned to the hospital tonight, and that guy's gonna work there, and tomorrow night, Rick's gonna work there, and the next night, you're gonna work there. Because all of the things that you're describing are things that the officers are dealing with now, and they need to be trained in all of those areas. Much of what we, we are, trying to find good mental health training is a challenge, but we're, we're working on that, and I haven't forgot about that discussion. But, so that person, and they also might be, you might work at half the night, half the shift, and you do it the other, other half the shift, depending on staffing, what they needed to get done, or whatever. So, we consider it just an assignment of one of the officers on that shift.
I just think, moving forward in a five-year period that you have this contract, I think you're gonna find that to become a necessity.
Becoming what?
Becoming a necessity.
Yeah. Well, I think that training is a necessity now, I'm just trying to find it.
I know, but I mean, additional specific training for that area.
Certainly, yeah, certainly can figure that out as we go. Yeah, I don't disagree.
All right.
Mr. Kerr?
Chief. Heaven forbid it's all hands on deck someday downtown or somewhere, you can pull that officer and, and take him.
Correct. And that's in the contract, the clause is in there, then in an emergency situation, got a shooting, you got something serious like that, yes.
Rick?
Are you still two officers short now?
Well, I wish we were, we're three officers short.
Three officers. And so, you wanna hire two more on top of those?
We're gonna hire two more on top of that.
Oh, boy.
So, we're, our training, our training officers will be very busy, yeah.
Any other questions, gentlemen? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Resolution 6744 has been passed and adopted. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next is an ordinance, ordinance amending section 5-70 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the payment of a filing fee for requests for appeals hearings for reckless owner designations.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-32. The title thereof be approved, and rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number 21-32, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance number 21-32 by number the first time, ordinance number 21-32 by number the second time, and ordinance number 21-32 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 21-32 be passed and approved.
Second.
By Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance 21-32 be passed and approved. Tobias?
Couple of months ago, we passed a similar change to our ordinance regarding nuisance properties, where if you had an appeal, there's a filing fee, you have to pay the filing fee at the time you appeal. We just clarified that if you didn't pay the filing fee when you appealed, your appeal was null and void. Well, we found some other places in our city code, and one of those being the reckless owner, where you, where somebody can file an appeal, there's a filing fee that's required. We would all understand that if you didn't pay the filing fee and you appealed, that your appeal doesn't go anywhere because you haven't completed it. Well, we just clarified that in this ordinance, stating that if you mean to appeal, you also have to pay the filing fee at the same time, or else your appeal is null and void.
From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance number 21-32 has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance adding Chapter 2, Division 13, Sections 2-328, 2-329, and 2-330 to the Beatrice City Code regarding the creation of the Office of Sanitary Superintendent.
I move that said ordinance be given number 21-33. The title thereof be approved, and rules be suspended, said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Motion by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that the ordinance be given number 21-33, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 21-33 by number the first time, ordinance Number 21-33 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 21-33 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 21-33 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by McLean, that ordinance Number 21-33 be passed and approved. Tobias?
With all of our department heads, we create a very similar ordinance what you have here before you tonight. As you can see, it's basically three code sections, one essentially creating the position of sanitary superintendent, one stating that it's appointed by this body and removed by this body, and then the third one is setting forth the duties of this particular department head. As you can see, the duties are essentially to run the sanitation department. Again, this is modeled after what we did recently with library director, finance director, all those that we've added here.
ABC.
Yep, over the last couple of years, so that is the change.
This person would be responsible for landfill?
No, no. Landfill is BOSSWA, and it's a separate entity.
Then it'd be the trucks, the routes, and such as that?
Correct.
Would they be included in the decisions on what we have to make for our future landfill?
They would also be included, because they would have, the person who's running the sanitation department would have a good understanding of what kind of trash is being brought in, and would certainly be involved in those conversations. But landfill is BOSSWA, separate board, separate entity.
Any other questions? That answer your question?
Yes.
Rich? Okay. Anyone from the public?
Is it the same person, Rick, we're talking about, same person that oversees the landfill?
You wanna come up and ask your question, Todd? Give your name and address, please.
Todd Langewer, 4306 West Locust Road. Would it be the same person that oversees the landfill? Would it be the garbage company?
At this point, the only thing being discussed is the addition of these code sections to the Beatrice City Code, not the individual who'd be fulfilling those duties.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Not a question, but a comment. I think Jason did a good job with what he, when we had him take this over with the garbage route and stuff, what he had to work with, I think he's done a good job, and it didn't take him too long to do it.
Thanks, Gary. Any other questions? All right, and your vote, please. That is approved 6-0. Ordinance Number 21-33 has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution, Resolution Number 6745, appointing Jason Moore as sanitary superintendent.
I move that Resolution Number 6745 be passed and adopted.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by, by McLean, that Resolution 6745 be passed and adopted.
Yeah, my recommendation is that based upon, as Gary's indicated, getting sanitation department up and running from where we were at in April, Jason and I walked in on a Friday afternoon about 4:30, he was up and running by Monday morning, so has done a good job, and I certainly would recommend that Jason be appointed as the sanitation superintendent.
Jason's our street superintendent. He's done a fantastic job on the, on the landfill, but we keep adding more and more and more for this young man to do. He's gonna have to have the trucks, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to take the calls from people who are upset. Same way with the street department. I think it's just too much to put on one person. I think that, that the, the sanitation supervisor and the street supervisor should be split, and we put, hire someone else to, to take care of the sanitation, because as you said, down the line, we're gonna have the, the new landfill to take it, and that's gonna be time-consuming. And I just don't wanna stretch him out too far and have things fall through the cracks.
And Jason, I've had that conversation, we've had lengthy conversations about his ability to handle all three departments, and I think Jason will tell you that based upon some of the people he's got around him, we believe that it's possible for him to continue. He's been handling all three of them now for a number of months, and I think he's done a good job, and I think we can continue to do so.
I'm not arguing the fact that he's done a good job, but I'm just saying that as things come up and, and pressure comes up, I just don't wanna see anything that he gets overloaded and things fall through the cracks.
Any other comments from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved, five in favor and one against. The no vote is from Councilman Kerr. Resolution 6745 has been passed and adopted. Next is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum?
Todd Langewer, 4306 West Locust Road. Your drop-off point for recyclables. I mean, you guys proud of what that looks like? I mean, I know you guys drive by it, you guys just close your eyes. We had a discussion here a while back with some of the gentlemen back here about cleaning up our city, and there's cardboard blowing around, the cans are full. I mean, is that your final, this is what we're gonna have? Or are we gonna do something different about it?
Can't answer your question, because we can't discuss it, Todd.
Okay. But I just think it looks tacky. You, you walk the trails, you get to see both sides of it, stuff's blowing all over the place. Something needs to be done different with it. I don't know if we need to move it someplace closer to keep a better eye on it, maybe this parking lot? But it just seems like it's over there out of sight, out of mind, and hell, it almost makes Dempster look better. So, we waiting to hear what you guys wanna do.
Thanks, Todd.
Bill Lehman, 613 South Ninth here in Beatrice, Nebraska. I noticed you guys had a lot of breakdowns lately for Mars, and I didn't know if they were inspecting trucks frequently like they should. I mean, it would help for the breakdown part, so any little thing, and that breaks down can get bigger as it goes along. So, if you guys like, pass these around, they're inspection books that drivers could look at, you know, for like tires, mirrors, whatever.
I, I know what they are.
I don't know what I do.
Yeah, every day.
I'm not very mechanical.
We've got too many documents. It's just a suggestion, you know, to help out a little bit. Help maintain the trucks a little better, so the mechanic would know what to do, and that would go to, like, the supervisor, supervisor over to your secretary, your secretary would write a work order, your work order would go to your mechanic, your mechanic would fix that and show that it's been fixed. That way you guys can maintain, and that'd even help on cost, and show your budget how much you're spending on per truck. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? All right. Rich?
I did get some compliments to Mr. Peethaw and his crew. The bandstand rededication was quite an event with the band, and I'll bet there was 100 to 200, between 100 and 200 people down there listening to that, and for the, for the way that the parks looked. So, Mark and his boys did a fantastic job.
We'll pass that along. All right, with that, our next regular city council meeting will be on July 19th in these chambers, and then more than likely plan on a work session on July 26th. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:39 PM.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:39 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone.